Okay, today is Monday, April the first, two thousand and nineteen. The time is seven P. M. and a regular meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called order. At this time, please silence electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of Silver Ride Sub Act of nineteen sixty-four, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that's available on the table in the back of the room by Jeff. Record call, please.
Ryan McKenzie.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Darren Cunningham.
Here.
Jamie King.
Here.
And Daryl Holden.
Here. Marks the fourth amendments, please. Approval of the amendments. Marks the fourth. You just heard a correct change.
They are changing on this one.
On this one.
Yes. What change was taken there?
What is the vote on the rezoning?
It was three to zero. Any questions on fair or say aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay. Old business, the second and final reading ordinance twenty nineteen dash ten, the bond ordinance. I'm ready.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. What you have before you for second reading and adoption is the bond ordinance that will allow the city to issue debt through the SRL for the upcoming proposed waterworks project that is expected to be bid on the night. So this gives the authority to issue debt through the state, which is also attached as a financial assistance agreement, which is basically your agreement between the state and the city to pay on that debt when it comes to. So if you have any questions, also under new business, I'm doing a great presentation, so if you want to hold your questions to that or I can answer questions.
How often can you apply for the state's revolving loan funds? Or is there only like once a year, twice a year, there's certain deadlines?
Depending on the nature of your project, the city would submit an application with the help of their engineers and what you get on your project priority list. And so depending on how you score and rank that project, depending on the need, other environmental impacts, and then how you compete against other communities that are looking for these low-cost funds, you can apply as often as you need to. So the state has a fiscal year funding cycle. So what that means is somewhere between June and December is typically when they're July and December is when they release their funds. That's kind of a first come, first served. Then anything that's any funds remaining after that point in time are kind of like a free-for-all. I don't want to speak for the state. That's one scenario. Another scenario is often they do two pool financings, which is not the, let's call it the bottom rates that they typically offer. They're still great rates that any community would be happy to have, but those are typically in the spring and fall. So depending on the need, they typically have a bigger pool in the fall. And then they're having one in the spring and that's part of what the city's going to be applying for, that spring pool. And it's still low cost of funding. If you were to go out on the open market, you'd probably typically have a little bit higher rates or interest rates on that. Hopefully that answers your question.
Chris said he read it. It was okay. I read it and it's a lot more than like. I'm not sure if you can say anything.
I think there are several amendments from the first reading and those are more legalese. I think Chris could vouch for that. There was some requests from SRF to make some amendments regarding amended and restated agreement and other script changes and other things like that.
So are we taking two votes, one to accept the bond ordinance and one to accept the deposit agreement?
Yes. Right.
I think there needs to be a motion made for amendments and then, well, I'm not a lawyer, so. And then a motion to pass the amended and restated tax increment revenue.
And then we'll need to have a person designated that we will be able to sign it from your council. I would think it was Jamie that would be the one, but just that we designate him to sign because once we get all the seven groups together on the piece, then we'll be able to sign off on it.
I'd move to pass ordinance twenty nineteen ten on second reading.
As amended.
As amended, yeah.
On second.
Okay, any other questions on that? A motion to on the second and final reading ordinance twenty nineteen dash ten, bond ordinance as amended. All fair or say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I need a motion for the approval of the tax increment revenue deposit agreement.
Second.
Second.
Questions? All fair or say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so passes. Okay. New business. First reading of the ordinance twenty nineteen dash one, water rates.
As Scott Hadler passes out the presentation, I believe you had these in your packet, but we're just providing them if you don't. So in combination with the bond ordinance that was just adopted on second reading, there's a rate ordinance to be introduced on first reading, which is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash eleven, which then stipulates adjustment in rates that would go along with that bond ordinance to allow the rates to be sufficient along with tax increment credit that we anticipate to happen to pay on that debt along with other operations. So just kind of explaining a little bit about this ordinance. The ordinance is assuming, let's call that worst-case scenario. So for legal reasons and because bids have not been received yet, to keep the train moving down the tracks, we're introducing what we consider the worst-case scenario or what's within the bond ordinance, which is a maximum authority to issue debt of the twenty-two point seven million. So we're establishing or we are introducing rates that allow for that financing. And then considering there's going to be a TIF credit that has been pledged by the county, the county RDC and the city RDC, which those pledges have been approved by resolution. Then there's what we anticipate to be a five hundred thousand dollar credit from the county to the city RDC for at least three years estimated in nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. And then subsequent to that, beginning in twenty twenty-two through the life of the loan, which is well, the life of the Honda TIF allocation area, which is assumed to be twenty thirty-eight, there's a five hundred thousand dollar TIF credit per year that will come in from the city. So the TIF credit is established in this ordinance, we expect when bids come in and then we move to a second reading and public hearing, we'll adjust this rate ordinance for actual bids and then we'll establish rates at that point in time. So with that, I'll also jump into the presentation that has the American flag on it, but I'll stop there answering questions about the rate ordinance in about a minute. Okay. So I don't, I won't keep you very long. Kind of the three main topics that I want to kind of address in this presentation is historical perspective. The stool, let me call it a war comp stool. And that's basically, and what I mean by stool is your budget. There's a budget and those revenues have to cover that budget, TIF pledge, which I've already kind of discussed a little bit, and then investment in the system, which is the waterworks system. So keep that, those thoughts in your mind as I go through the presentation. So turning to page two. What we have here is historical operations. So Rick and Donna have done a very good job over the years of making the investments in the system and also keeping the utility in good financial position. So if we take a step back a little bit, six years before this period, there's been systematic rate increases in three phases each time. So going back to two thousand and ten through twenty fifteen, there was the council with the recommendation of the Water Board has increased rates to maintain operations and to make those investments. So the utility has a history of making those needed adjustments as need be. Sixteen through eighteen, there's currently rate increases approved and that just continues to build the cash that is needed to make, to run the operations and make those investments. So from a historical perspective, the utility has been on good financial footing based on Donna, Rick, and their team. Moving on to page two. There's certain requirements within the outstanding bond ordinances that you must maintain certain levels of cash and through local ordinances. So as you can see, looking at the far right-hand column, the utility is maintaining their cash balances in each one of the approved funds. I'll point out that in the bond and interest account, that the TIF that is coming in from the Honda allocation area, and let me call it, there's two TIFs. There's the top bucket and the bottom bucket. And from the bottom bucket, which is the excess, you're prepaying a series of bonds both on water and source. So that's why there's a little bit of overfunding, but in February, the utility's made a payment that prepaid that debt. And so now we're still looking at twenty twenty-two for that debt to roll off and that's when the city stip will pay on the, a portion of the city stip will pay on the new debt. Moving on to page four. Let me call this the first of the stool, or the first leg of the stool, and that's the pro forma operations and maintenance. We looked at your test year, made adjustments for fixed known and measurable items, and made an allowance for unperceived contingencies and contingencies and items. So we looked at one point eight million in test year expenses. We made adjustments for salaries, wages, benefits, insurance, chemicals, et cetera. And we're looking at a pro forma would go into your budget, a pro forma operation and maintenance expense of a little over two million. Moving on to page five, let's call this stool number two. This is your five-year capital improvement plan. This continually gets updated by Rick and Donna and their team. We're looking at an average capital allowance to make those investments, those end-of-the-life or replace those end-of-life assets of a little over three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. For comparison, your current rates are allowing for about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So there's a little bit of a tick up, increase in calls, changes in some of the things they're doing. So that allows them to continue to make those investments on a cash basis. Moving on to page six. Let's call this stool three A. This is the outstanding debt. Currently, there are two bonds outstanding, the A and the B from two thousand and seven that allowed the improvements to start Honda and other improvements to the system for the existing rate payers. There is a TIF credit coming from that top bucket. Remember I said two buckets? There's the top bucket and that's coming in through, until those bonds kind of pay off. We're going to meet in the middle from the two buckets, one from the top, one from the bottom. We meet in the middle, expected to be in twenty twenty-two. And that TIF is about five hundred fifty-one thousand a year. Moving on to page seven. This is where we get into the project, the proposed project. We'll call it the debt service on this three B. We're looking at a roughly twenty-two point three million dollar project. This allows, and your representative from H and B is here, he can explain a little bit more, but this allows for increased capacity in the plant, a new plant, new technologies. I think there's some safety inputs into this as well. So it allows you to make, to be, I guess, active in future growth in any increases or changes in Honda or any other large use. From that, there's already some current funds that have been applied or paid for to the tune of one point eight million coming from additional Honda TIF construction funds that have been remaining and then some local improvement funds. And so the proposed bond would pay on this, on this project. The way we've structured the debt, it's not really shown in here, but I'll just speak to it a little bit. We're still looking at an SRF full loan. It's a twenty-two-year financing. We kind of accelerated the debt or the principal payment rebate, but that allows us to do is to keep rates lower. So there's a little bit of a trade-off. You can keep rates lower in the long term or you could keep a phase lower. So we thought it was best to keep rates lower overall. So by accelerating those principal payments, twenty-two instead of twenty, you receive that benefit. So we're also assuming an interest rate of three point five percent through the life of the loan. It's hard to predict where the pool will come out. The pool kind of works SRF in a way that SRF issues their debt, then they pass that savings on to you. They typically issue fifteen to twenty-year debt, but then they kind of restructure for whoever the pool participants are. So we believe there's cushion in here. So not only do we hope that the ordinance that was introduced, the bids will come in better, but also the interest rates will be lower. So we.
What is the five and a half percent of bond ordinance?
So in most bond ordinance, you allow for a maximum not to exceed interest rate. That's not the interest rate that you hope to get. That's just allow you, just you never know what will happen to the market. What SRF does is they track their, the market over ninety days. So their rates end up being tracked through for ninety days and then we think that's where the rates will be. So that just allows you a capacity, so to speak. So on page eight is where those stools all kind of come together. And I talked about the last stool, which is the proposed debt. And then there's a debt service reserve, which is that last stool, which is stool number four. Here we have current engineer's estimates. So I would say this is what we hope to get on the bids as far as the financing that would be concerned or the rate structure that would need to be in place. And we're showing excluding TIF and including TIF. So the rate ordinance that is introduced is assuming that there's no TIF and then there's going to be a TIF credit. I won't get into all the mental gymnastics you need to do to assume the TIF credit, but as long as the TIF comes in, what Donna will do is have a net rate and so that will be the rate that is billed to the customers. And so that would be assuming the TIF credit. But for legal reasons and SRF coverage reasons, you have to introduce the rates without the TIF for gross coverage and that's just over and above your minimum rates and what they need to be. I know there's a lot in there. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them here or through email.
What's the difference between the debt service and the debt service reserve?
So the debt service is that annual principal and interest payments you have to make on the debt, that's just servicing the debt. Typically, when you issue revenue bonds, there is a reserve requirement, so that's a one-year's payment or a safety net. And SRF requires that, even if you go out on the open market, you would be required to fund a reserve. And that's just money set aside to make your maximum one-year's payment. And it's stipulated within the bond ordinance, I think it's section fifteen.
I don't think it's.
Yeah. So it's usually section fourteen or fifteen, but that's just a safety net. So what happens is your rates build up to that. So right now you have a debt service reserve on your outstanding debt, I think it's a billion thirteen thousand, you'll build up to like a million eight. So over that three-year period, we hope to build up that cash of two hundred and seventy thousand to get to that point. Now, again, this is assuming engineer's estimates. There's what else I'm going to show you is what we anticipate to be worst-case scenario. But we will clean that up once the bids come in. So just kind of short-circuiting a little bit, down at the bottom is additional revenues required. This is basically the increase in revenues that would be needed. Excluding the TIF is one point three million over those three years and then including the TIF is eight hundred and seventy-six thousand. So that difference is the five hundred thousand, which is the TIF credit. So that is pledged or that has been approved to be pledged. Moving on to page nine is the rates and the percentage increases. So this top half is excluding the TIF and over those three years, on the average user rate or user bill or residential bill, excuse me, assuming five hundred and thirty-three cubic feet, currently you're at twenty-four dollars, it would go up to thirty-five dollars. Now, this is excluding the TIF credit. We don't anticipate this, what the customers will be. Hopefully it's more like scenario two with the TIF credit where it's twenty-four and it's going up to thirty-one, so it's only a six dollar and ninety-five, or six dollar and ninety-five cent increase over those three years. If bids come in better, we'll adjust it accordingly. Page ten, everybody always wants to know, how do we compare? One thing I will point out, this is, the comparison is everyone rates today. We, and we're showing out till twenty thirty-one, which is assuming an average residential bill of thirty-one forty-seven. So no one knows, there's typically leapfrogging effects that happen as communities do projects. Sometimes every system is different. You don't know if they're being subsidized by other funds or riverboat funds or one department's paying more salaries than the other. So it's always hard to compare, but these are local and similar-sized communities. So you can still see that you're, if we were to take out and just include the last one, you'd still be somewhere in the middle of that pack. Any questions on that? Moving on, as again, the rate ordinance that was introduced, that worst-case scenario for legal reasons and to keep everything moving down the tracks. A lot of the inputs are the same, the only difference is the debt service and the debt service reserve. Instead of a twenty million dollar bond issue, you're looking at twenty-two million dollar bond issue. So accordingly, you would have a take higher in rates. You would produce additional revenues, one point five to one million, so you can still see there's about a two hundred thousand dollar difference, but there's still a five hundred thousand dollar difference between the two. So the math works. Moving on to page twelve. Worst-case scenario, again, similar setup, looking at that, that top half, twelve dollar and five cent increase. That bottom half is an eight dollar and seventeen cent increase, worst-case scenario. And I would even point out that even when you look at the worst-case scenario, that rate is still pretty comparable on that average residential bill of five hundred and thirty-three cubic feet or four thousand pounds per month. I know I throw a laugh at you, a lot of numbers in here, a lot of what-ifs, TIF credit, no TIF credit. The pledges have been made, the agreements are circulating around, and then it's, because there's seven parties, that's a lot of parties. That's not normal and it's just a normal utility improvement project, but it does have a significant benefit to the, to the community, to increase capacity. I have just a little bit of a side story. I do have other clients that have capacity issues and there's a major employer or a major factory like that and they're having to scramble to increase capacity and this allows you to plan ahead. So.
So like, like last time, three years, are you going to make steady? Those three years.
We, because the TIFs are projections and it's been coming in stronger than we anticipated. Other side of our business does the TIF projections for the county RDC and it has been higher than we anticipated. If nothing happens, I would imagine that would still be coming in. So I don't foresee that many issues there, but I won't guarantee it.
And so the ordinance is based not on the worst-case scenario, or is it?
It is, it is for legal reasons, it is, you can, oh, so, if I may, Chris. So when you introduce rates and then if it gets approved and you move into the second or third reading, depending on the community, you can adjust down. If you have to go up, you haven't properly notified any rate payer, so then you have to start all over again. And based on how the timetable's set up, we kind of had to get all the notes on time. If we don't, that could, we could delay financing or not be able to get financing from the state. I think they plan to issue their debt first week of May and then I think they're closing sometime a little bit after that. And the city has to have all their ducks in a row from the TIF pledges to the amended and stated agreement, rate ordinance, bond ordinance. I'm probably missing some other legal document. It's just on my head. So that all has to happen and you have to have notice so many days out, ten days, seven days. They're all a little bit different, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, let's take a motion on the first reading ordinance twenty nineteen dash eleven, water rate. Okay, go ahead on second. Okay, go ahead on second. Okay. Let's do a roll call, but please, any other questions, guys, before we do this?
I guess I'm just trying to understand real quick, though. We're basing this on worst-case scenario. By the time we come back with our second reading, we're not going to know if we're at worst case or better than that.
On April ninth, the bids will be in, right? And we will know exactly what the rate will be.
Okay.
That's worst case. So that's why they went high. So that when the bids come in, if the bids come, we'll hope that the rates will be low.
So tonight, we're voting on worst-case scenario.
Right. So at that point in time, I believe there will be a meeting with the council, and we'll do another rate presentation, out-shortening. But I wanted to lay out all the facts today, because it's very good. It's a cumbersome deal.
You're using worst-case scenario, though, so.
Well, I'm sorry if I use those words, but just to differentiate the two, best-case, worst-case. But we would hope that the bids come in as estimated, excuse me, and then, you know, we'll send out all the notices and then update the ordinance at that point. And then establish really what the incremental dollar amount increases.
So then on April twenty-second is what I sent out to you, is this possible second special meeting that we would have to go over what there is, the bids. And then we would, then that's when we'll come back with the correct rates.
And we also go back all the signatures for what tip funds are required?
All the signatures. Go ahead. Okay. To kind of go back a little bit, so the county, the county RDC and the city have approved those resolutions for the tip pledge. So they're going to be attached to the overall document, which controls that seventeen bucket of funds, how the kind of tip gets allocated. Donna can speak to that. It's kind of a nightmare. But that document controls, at that point in time, you know, kind of how it all will happen. But that's anticipated to be executed on May first. So that's a little bit after, but we'll know what the rates are. And then I think all boards, but SRF and Bank of New York have approved the agreement or looked at it, well, they're all looking at it. I think Honda's also a party, too. So once those other three entities look at it, then the signatures will circulate that final document. It will all be part of the bond transcript, which is the closing document that the mayor, Ashley, will execute on behalf of the city.
I won't be here until twenty-second. I'll be in Texas next week.
There's a chance of I'm being on the table.
Does it have to be then? Could we push it out a week?
I don't think we can. For, I think, based on the timing of SRF wishes to have all the documents, after the rates are approved, there's like a five-day and a fourteen-day objecting period. And those have to have subsided before you pre-close, which is bond sale. Then two weeks later, you go into sales. So I think the timing is at the point where I don't think you, I don't think it's possible to push it back a week, but I can check the legal council to see if there's movement
No, I was going to ask, you know, seven o'clock in work is what I was looking at. Just like the council meeting.
So you're coming back from some work, maybe that gives you more time?
Yeah.
Okay, so the special council meeting on April the twenty-second for public hearing adopts that new water ordinance at seven P M. on there. Donna, you'll have to make sure you get it into paper. Okay, any other questions? Yeah. I just want to make sure to wait any more questions. Roll call, though.
Um, Pierre, Kevin Fleetwood.
Yes.
Adrian Huddington.
Yes.
Jamie Kane.
Yes.
Darren Hutton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And seven P M. twenty-second.
Good evening. Let's kind of go through some things that we have been working on doing over the past couple of years that we are finally able to get going in the community. I've already spoken with the, actually, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of the game. I guess we're supposed to be discussing the first ordinance or first reading the first ordinance, my bad, on the local equitable sharing fund.
Twenty nineteen dash eight?
Yes. My apologies.
Okay.
Getting ahead of myself. So that's the one that I had brought to you a couple of months ago. We had received, or I had spoken with the law firm that will be handling all of our forfeitures, which is Garrison Law Office out of Indianapolis. We have to have that separation between the prosecutor's office and ourselves when doing those seizures and forfeiture. So again, this money will be from all forfeiture officers are involved with to where we decide to go in front of a judge to seize monies that we know have been used in illegal activities. And I could tell you that we currently do have one case pending to where we should be receiving forfeiture money within the next couple of months, so.
So have we not received forfeiture last year before now?
We have. A lot of it's been done through the federal government. There for a while, there was a little bit of a law in the, through Indiana, on whether you wanted to try to go through forfeitures, but they had cleaned a lot of it up, and the assembly kind of narrowed down what and how you can go about it. And so it used to be, like I said, a longer process, but we've been able to work our way with this Indianapolis firm that pretty much handles nothing but the forfeiture process and all that, so. But we have done it before, but mainly through federal. And this money gets split up. So if we get, like, let's say we do a ten thousand dollar seizure, it will actually get split up between ourselves, prosecutor's office, the law firm, and there's so much by state law that has to be going back to the schools. So the schools will also get some monies back from what we seize.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Is that something you're going to be putting together, like an annual report on?
Absolutely, yes. Like, right now, what we do through the federal equitable sharing, Ashley and I have got to sit down this week, and we had to report everything that we were spending that money on. And that, so yeah, that's something that can easily be done, and that, so it's all going to be definitely tracked.
You're already giving us an annual report?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, I can do that, thank you. Okay, now, that's where I was going beforehand, some of the things that we've been trying to do over the past two to three years, we're finally actually kind of getting to where we want to be. And that, early in the evening, the Board of Works approved for Greensburg, like I said, I know we haven't done this at least in the seventeen years I've been here, from, or on May eleventh, from around eight A M. to probably eleven or twelve, just depending on what the attendance is. We'll be hosting a bike rodeo here at the city hall. There will be enough area to where we can cone off the sections, and we have the parking on Moffort and in the front. And that, last year, we had five pedestrians struck on bicycles, one which was a fatality. So what we're wanting to do is be able to provide anybody, especially our youth in the city of Greensburg, with a bike helmet and the rules of the road and that. So that is one thing that we will be doing on May eleventh. Second thing, I know I've given end-of-the-year reports where we've talked about getting officers more involved in the elementary school. Beginning next school year, we will be putting officers in the school, the elementary K through five, and we'll be teaching or instructing a program called Second Step, which is a course to where we'll be working with the school counselors and teachers and administrators on social, emotional, learning, bullying, and body safe programs. So normally, for the bodies, for the safety body and all that, we use an officer out of I N P D. I have heard recently that he's looking at retirement, so this will give an opportunity for our guys to get into the schools and to be able to interact with the kids. Again, anybody that has anything to do with school systems and that, we see kind of the social, emotional issues that our youth are having right now. So that's one thing that we definitely want to work with them. So again, starting next year, we'll have officers in the school, in every single classroom, teaching part of this curriculum and that, so. Next thing we're looking at doing is a youth camp. We're looking at June or July to have this youth camp. Again, some of these programs will be starting out slow. We're going to look at having certain type of demonstrations, K-nine demonstration, work with the fire department, have our tack team come out and that. And then one day, we'll look at maybe securing the bowling alley and also taking kids to the pool. And again, it'll be done through a process, just that relationship between officers and the youth. And that, again, we're looking at probably one day, like maybe every Tuesday in June, of having something, and there will be that process and that. So that's another thing we're doing. Citizens Academy, we will be definitely starting out probably slow with this, but we are looking at having a defensive tactics type of instruction, especially for your high school senior girls who are getting ready to go off to college, ways that they can protect themselves, giving them ideas. And that, we have two officers who are currently attending Columbus, assisting with their officers to have the same program, and I do look for that to either start, or I'm guessing, next school year. So we're looking at doing that, plus another class, again, for anybody, for defensive tactics purposes, again, on how to defend yourself and that. Another one we're looking at doing is a gun safety class, which will be done by, again, application, resumes, backgrounds, and that. That's one thing that I've heard a lot of since I've been chief, is a lot of females want to have that extra safety when handling a firearm. So that's a program that we'll also start, and we would be looking at doing these two programs probably fall time. We will not be able to get them in the summer, but I'm hoping in the fall. The last thing for this evening, reference to the programs, is National Night Out. We have tried this once, weren't very successful, but I do feel it will be a lot better off this go-around. For those that are not familiar with this, this is a program that is done by thousands of departments throughout the United States. Millions of citizens participate in this. National Night Out, it will be on August the sixth, which is the designated day by the National Night Out Committee. And pretty much what it is, is you either find an area of town to where maybe you're having some issues or voice of concerns, or you can throw several block parties in that. And it's, again, the relationship of interacting between law enforcement officers and the community. If the community has any issues, any concerns, again, it gives them the opportunity to come out and talk to us and get that information. This year, we will be looking at having that at North Park there on Carver Street. So again, more than likely, we're going to have the fire department, EMS, the emergency management, sheriff's department to come out and assist with us, again, putting on programs, demonstration for the kids. We will definitely be providing free cookout, the police department and possibly firefighters. We grill out some maybe hamburgers and hot dogs, again, for the public, and again, just to bring everybody together and that. So I could tell you that Patrolman Casey Jones has already started out today with going around talking to businesses about hopefully getting some stuff donated so we can make this event happen. And again, it's pretty much to assure the areas that we're having problems at in town, from those, the three hours that we'll be hosting at, there will not be any crime committed in that neighborhood between that time. Again, we want to show that, you know, we are there, we do understand the concerns of the citizens, so we want to be out in force and assisting in any way that we can, so. And again, every single year, we can kind of change that up. So those are.
What was the date, Ken?
August the sixth, and more than likely, it'll be from five to eight. The last couple of years, the reason why we haven't really done it was they've always had it on the first night of school. In that conflict, where this year, luckily, they'll have, the day of school is starting as the week prior, so hopefully, we'll have a little bit of a better response, so. And that's it with programs. Any questions? Next, IT engineer. I know we brought this up last month at the meeting, again, spoke with Board of Works earlier this evening. The questions that were raised on the salary, what we would have paid, we're looking at anywhere from sixty to seventy-five thousand is what the Greensburg Police Department would have paid if we had an IT person come in last year and meet what we needed to be done and that. And I would say that that number would probably be equal to the sheriff's department and city dispatch. We also spoke with numerous agencies on how they run their IT programs, and I would almost say probably ninety-five percent of the agencies stated that they run their program as either citywide or countywide, and that, like, city hall would hire somebody and they would just manage them through the city. So those were the two big things I know that were asked of last time on how that would be done. I made a recommendation to the Board of Works that we have a member of the Board of Works and a member of city council on a committee to sit down and start talking with the county to see funding, how that would all be done, timeline, job descriptions, everything like that. So Rick Emsweller from the Board of Works and Mr. Polling here for the city council will be on that board. Again, I'm not sure about the timeline and that. We are, I would like to see it this year, but again, it just depends on what we come up with. And I would, again, I would think that those funds would come out of the public safety portion.
So it'd be a city-county thing for both?
I don't think I, Mr. Polling, if I forgot anything, I don't know.
Actually, I think you did a better job this time.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Trying to cut down. But yeah, so like I said, that's what we're hoping to do there and bring that back in front of everybody. Like I did tell the Board of Works, I know there's been some things out there that we already got somebody selected for this. That's not true. We'll be accepting applications and that. Again, I do know, I've had three or four people contact me asking about the position. So the good thing is, is we do have general interest, it sounds like, here locally, of somebody that would want to possibly do this. So I think that's a good feeling and that. So, yeah, like I said, we'll get that started, and we'll keep everybody up to date on what we're doing there. And last but not least, I know that we've been anxious, and I unfortunately haven't had her through the past couple of months, but this is Echo. She is two years old, German Shepherd, and Sergeant Chris Bridges is the handler. Again, she's narcotics and that, so she, I don't know if Chris can tell about how many deployments she has had since she has been here in January, but we did get her through Westfield at Ultimate K-nine, and like I said, she's been an excellent addition already. So, yeah. Do we know about how many ones she's had?
Fifteen, thirty?
Fifteen, thirty. So again, on your reports, you'll see, we're kind of staying steady at around twenty-five arrests a month for narcotics and that, and around a hundred a month for overall arrests. So again, she's a. So again, she's a great asset to the community. And evidently, I am boring her, so I will end at that. Thank you very much.
Okay, Chief Garrett.
Good evening. I'm here to, I'd like to ask you about proof for some money for the Public Safety Fund for pickup trucks. Which was, we gave one away the past administration and we probably shouldn't have it sold right now. Short, basically, a pickup truck for our trails.
What'd they give it away for?
Don't have any idea.
Could they get to?
They gave it to EMA and EMA gave it to the county. So the pickup truck we have now, we do use it for ice rescue during the winter. So basically, it's tied up December, January, February, March for that. So we really don't have a pickup to use. I wrote you a letter about those describing what was going on with the pickup truck numbers. Thanks. So basically, I have like permission to use the Public Safety Fund.